Yes.
I'll call the main daughter, would you please stand and salute the flag?
Flag of the United States of America. In the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to. I remember I used to do that at the academy back in the day, after the day of startups. Home of silence. When we did that, I don't know if you still do it, they salute.
You know, I've done them for announcements this year when after COVID, we started having, well, during COVID, we started having students broadcast live. And they beamed it out because we had some students on campus, some home and. And to be honest with you, I don't know what they're doing right now.
I did it a lot.
I did it a lot. I should. That's fantastic.
You, it's your, your turn.
Oh, first. Wow. The rest of the rigmarole, so.
Can I sit here? Is that okay? Or do you want me to see a certain place?
I, I was sent, I have a little comment. You know, I, I was sent this memorandum of the, uh. Superintendent. And I went through it, you know, something.
Are you thinking of applying?
I'm thinking, I think he must be God.
It's a requirement, yeah, but.
Yes, I, I, I have to worship you. How can anybody do all that?
Maybe I'm not. The interim, they only cut that right in half, so. And they've redone the job. I don't know if that's the new job description, but. Uh, one of the board members can speak to the district superintendent search. And I, that's good to share that with other select boys, but. Just thank you for having us tonight. So my main purpose, I, I bring news, Leanne, um. Um, this is Stephanie Saltzman. I think you met her, maybe you met her last year. She's our business manager. Came on board last, talked over here, Gola.
Yes, yeah.
Just wanted to introduce folks and our purpose tonight was just to establish lines of communication with you. Uh, some face to face and answer any questions that you may have about the, all things that going in the district and, uh. And maybe particular questions you might have about moving forward. Uh, I know one of the burning questions right now is Richmond did vote to leave the district, um. And we wish them well, um. And so we're in the process of, there was a withdrawal agreement that was created last year. I think it was finalized in the spring of last year, maybe May. And, um, the, the big question is how is that going to affect the remaining schools? And, uh, definitely I've talked about this a lot and we're, we're very cautious in what we say because there's, there's a lot of. So many variables that go into determining a budget heading into a school year, um. Property values and all these other things that we don't always have up to date data. Uh, if we went by, I know Superintendent Gilbert before he left had shared, um, with some of you last year that if they were to leave. Based on last year's numbers, uh, it would not have a significant impact to the remaining schools. Based again on last year's numbers and there's a lot of variables around that. So I'm always cautious in what we, what we say. So there's agreements that are written for folks that are more than 50% already at Richmond. Any of their schools would stay on board at their schools. There's a lot of shared positions and, uh, you know, we, we always look at like. I know as a principal, we always look at, uh, when we brought budgets to the, to the central office to prepare budgets for next year. We've just started that process now by meeting with directors and principals. And we're looking at central office staffing. We've had a position that was, uh, vacated in the last month and Stephanie and stuff does and taking on more duties there. We've brought main school management in to kind of look at what's appropriate staffing, uh, for a district our size moving forward. And, and kind of looking at those shared positions, like a stuff like education, teacher and IP director, those crowds director, those type of things. Um, so we'll be losing around four hundred and sixty five students.
Give or take, yes.
Give or take from Richmond. That's just the quick and skinny on that piece.
You know, back in the day, there was a standard that the Bo Dachi administration had. Passed the RSU's meet, uh, as far as number of students.
Minimum number of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that currently is not. Which kind of forced schools to consolidate at that time or encouraged, I should say, to consolidate. Uh, they didn't enforce many of those.
No.
Sticks. They had lots of sticks that never turned into sticks, um. Everyone was forced into this under threats that. They never followed through with.
Less carrots.
Less carrots, more sticks, but. Sticks either, so. So there's no penalty there. We're not going out at, at the present time, we're not going out and trying to, to get another community to join RSU too. I'm saying that couldn't happen in the future, but there's not like a mad rush to find another partner. Um, I think that the focus right now, last spring, and I'm not sure if anybody from Monmouth was involved in this process, but the, the district embarked on a future search. Of just kind of hitting, uh, taking a moment to reflect upon the district, its strengths, its areas of growth. Uh, there are community members, teachers, students, parents, uh, administrators, teachers, there will be else board members. Uh, from across the district and looked at those areas. Um, obviously with the turnover in, in superintendent, there's a little bit of just that process slowed down a little bit. We're continuing that and we're building out of that really the vision moving forward and eventually this strategic program will be built from that. So building up the next five years. But looking again at all areas of the district, what, what can we do? What, what do we do well and what could be improved upon? Um, so that's a really exciting piece for the district. It's also an opportunity right now and it, not that it was planned this way. But it's an opportunity with Richmond leaving that we have two high schools. I, I do believe being in both of those schools. And middle schools, elementary schools, I, I do think philosophically there's a. There's an importance placed on academics as well as rich co-curricular activities. I, I think that's very similar, um, outlook there as far as vision. So I think it's an opportunity for us to, to really kind of, again, reflect, set some goals and really move forward strongly. I feel that way coming in, so it's, uh. Rather than looking at this as negative, I think we're looking at it as an opportunity to really just kind of, um. Build moving forward.
I think. A future search showed that. And we had five towns represented there. We all kind of have different ideas, but. We kind of coalesced around a lot of the same themes and we found that we did, our differences weren't as big as our. Similarities on what we want, you know, in our school district. I think a lot of people came in thinking, oh, well. Halldale gets this or Monmouth gets this or Richmond gets this. And everyone really just wants a lot of the same things. Uh, and it was, it was good, I, I think to see that and that we could all agree on what we really want. Uh, but at the same time, recognizing the differences in our towns and that we don't all need to be the same. But we can still, we still educate our kids and still recognize the strengths that each town has. Forcing anywhere, forcing any round pegs into square holes, so to say.
I was going to agree, and I think we were far enough along in that process. We knew Richmond was considering withdrawing, but there wasn't. We didn't stall those conversations to say, let's see what happens, or if Richmond leaves, we'll do this. If Richmond stays, we'll do that. Uh, so we're at a good place now to just continue the momentum of those conversations. Knowing the towns that will remain within RSU two. You said round, oh, round square pegs, round holes. Well, I, and we also kind of realized like it is, sounds so cliche, but. RSU two is like a family and that the communities need to be sisters or cousins, not sisters, or sisters, not twins. But if you want that crazy, no. Like we don't have to be identical, but we share the same values and are going to move forward and, um. Still keep our individual identities.
I mean, one of the important parts of that future meeting, what I took from that was, was. It was centered around children, kids, communities, not so much the differences, but the, the, the attributes and similarities of.
Yes.
To make sure the students were, uh. Into the future, we're getting the same, the role of system.
And I think one of the things, a lot of the themes were so similar, right? Leadership. Uh, grading, um, facilities, like it was really all. I think to me, I mean, you know, being the newest member of the school board, you know, and this. Especially during COVID, you know, um, it really was an eye opener for me to see how. How that communication, some of those historic beliefs and things sort of linger, but that is really not as accurate as people think. You know, there's perceptions that people have amongst all of our towns that are there by tradition or history. Um, we're thrown together. A lot of people didn't like that, but everybody was really focused on the same, very, very similar things. They walked out of there with paper that was, you know, on target.
Yeah, well, I think that was something that was, uh, as when we, uh, created the RSU, uh, in oh nine, uh, I think it was, um. We, the, it, we, uh, I, I think like Don Saviski and only other plant, the, the people who were, who were guiding that, uh, Mike Rogers. They, uh, that, and a lot of others, uh, as well, uh. Wanted to make the schools as, uh, similar in lots of ways. So they went to from like the high honors stuff to, and. To, uh, you know, like cum laude stuff that, that was. Different. And the way of grading, of course, all came along, those are the, that, uh. Standards based stuff that, uh. Wasn't, uh, we weren't using it, uh. I mean, you, while you were involved in this.
Yeah. Certainly spread, sped up the process and, and don't forget Maine at that time was moving to person space diplomas too. That was, that was coming on the horizon in Maine at the time, but certainly there was, there was some growing pains there in the early days. But we learned from our past and, you know, and take those lessons and move forward and, you know. It's a little bit awkward right now with, you know, Richmond. So when we, at this point, what we're doing is we're, we're doing these visioning activities. And bringing teachers in for professional development, curriculum development as far as, as they are planning. The future and we're having discussions around grading and assessment and scoring. We're doing that with our, our Halldale, Dresden and, and Monmouth teams because that's something in the future. We still are fully supporting Richmond, um, throughout the rest of school year. They're still in our school. We, you know, we don't treat anything differently there. They have, you probably read this, but they have a transition team right now and then. Just through the legal process, they can't vote their school board until the first week in March. So, but just today, um, it. You know, it's a different lens I'm looking through now too, but, uh, I was compiling a list of positions they, they requested us that they'll no longer have. And I was just really kind of looking that it was like 20 different positions there that really fulfill unique roles. And I know here, uh, when we had a part-time superintendent and we were trying to. You know, some years, some pretty difficult budget decisions, like repair a roof or, or lose a teacher and/or a program. I mean, that. That those were the decisions we were making or looking at an IT director and just all that's involved in technology right now, just thinking how one small town. Can take that, the cost of that on and have somebody really in versus the benefit of working together with, you know, in a, in a larger district. I mean, there's, there's certainly benefits to it. So just trying to have that balance.
Have they approached you, uh, well. I, I know when we were thinking of leaving and we'd taken the vote and all that stuff, uh, we, Virgil Hammond was the superintendent. And we were. I, I don't know how serious we were, but we wanted him to be, continue to be our superintendent, you know, part-time thing. And, uh. Uh, so I don't know, was, was Richmond, uh, thinking?
I'm not sure what they're, they're thinking because it's, it's very awkward for them. So they have a transition team, but that transition team has no authority. So the town voted for, you know, X amount of dollars to help, you know, the legal fees and all these pieces to go, but they cannot even hire a superintendent. And I mean, sure, they'll, they'll probably be able to advertise somehow, but the later they advertise that pool of candidates. They were, they're in a tricky spot right now, um. But certainly there are many educators there and administrators that I have, you know, high amount of respect for and good people in all of our communities, so.
My understanding is they were just putting drafts together so that when the board got in, voted in at the beginning of March, of which. My understanding is that many of them are seeking those full-time positions too. So some of those transition team members. Who are current board members, they are still looking to be board members in Richmond. So there'll be consistency. But I, my understanding is that they, they were putting a draft job description together. They're putting ads up, you know, together. Um, budget templates together so that when the board is approved and voted in and, you know. Sworn in at the beginning of March, they'll be able to immediately take action. So some of those may change for, you know, anyone who's voted in, but. Some consistency in numbers that I would imagine some of that would be. Get moving. I don't know. It's not ideal for them.
Is there any ready, have questions?
I do.
Yeah.
It's the horse I want to still beat. So, um. What, what kind of plan? And this is the question I asked. Mr. Gilbert last year, you know, to increase and allow more kids to have vocational exposure to vocational training. And at a younger age, because you really need to start figuring that out in. Seventh, eighth grade, if you want to work with your hands as opposed to go to a four-year liberal arts college that. You might not get a job that you can pay for your degree, you know? So having a, having a job. I mean, I just had extensive work done on my house and everybody that did work on my house is at the age of retirement or beyond. And so who's going to fix your toilet, um, when Danny Niles decides to really retire? So, you know, um. It's, it's of utmost importance, I think, that these kids get, uh, explosiveness like we did. In junior high and high school and talk about, you know, making everything the same. We had that program. And because nobody else did, we couldn't have it, which made absolutely no sense to me. So, but as we said, that's the past. Now moving forward, we need to figure out a way to expose more than, you know, five kids to. Driving all the way out to Augusta, um.
I firmly.
I know you're right there with me. Yes.
And my experience last year of being a superintendent tech center director, had many meetings with business people and.
Yes.
And employers and people coming out of sight desperate for all of our programs and, you know, I. And it was the same thing there. The problem, you know, there are, there are major challenges with access for students.
Yes.
Um, because we have a whole list of graduation requirements the state gives us that kids, you know, and typically, you know, I'm waffling here a little bit, but. In my opinion, in the late nineties, the, you know, the state of Maine really did disservice to. To our students and, and our, our state. And at the time, that was the first time the main learning cells came out, which is really the statewide curriculum. And explicitly left out of that were industrial arts, along with cooperative education, some of these applied learning opportunities and. Not long after the central program services funding model came out and schools that had those programs. It didn't really seem like it was required or necessary experience. And sadly, a lot of those spaces now have been converted and not just in Monmouth, across the state and it, and it breaks your heart. And talking to, you know, state representatives last year, they're, they're getting a lot of pressure right now from business industry because. They, they need these folks and they, they want that. And it's been efforts to try to get it back in the middle school level, but now you're kind of building from ground up and even finding people to teach those because in. In a regular school, it's a different certification. Nobody even offers that certification. As a tech center director, before I came here, I was desperately looking for a carpentry teacher. Good luck. I mean, a teacher pay when they're, what they can do in the, out in the field right now. So I mean, it's a, it's a. Perfect storm, but Chris, I, I think there are a couple of different things. I, you know, I think anything we can do to get more applied learning opportunities for kids at a younger age is just. Engages kids and exposes them to different careers. I know that there's a lot of great work being done here pre-COVID. We had a Melmac grant where we're doing a ton, ton of, uh, career exploration type of activities. Where we're getting kids off campus. We're bringing people on campus. I'm looking at, I'm not sure if any of you did that, but came out and, you know, we had auto mechanic people coming out. We had. People doing the linesman stuff out here on the, on the lawn. We had a lot of really good activities. We were bringing students to community colleges. We were bringing them to the tech center, exposing them. Uh, with COVID kind of hit, it obviously put a stop, but what we were noticing at the high school level, yes, the ATC is just one option, but those numbers are through the roof. They were filling those programs. So it's something I think we need to continue to look at outside the box. There's another initiative in Maine right now called extending learning opportunities. It's ELOs. It's like the new fancy thing. You've been around for a while. It's looks a lot like cooperative education, um. We've got a fancy new name. I think that has a lot of promise. Jobs for Maine grads is really, uh. Kind of embedded into DOE right now. A lot of their leadership is now working in DOE. Uh, looking at Leanne Nodderhead as a, as a high school counselor. There's a lot of opportunities there and, and kids are doing what's called badging. So they work on specific skills and they kind of receive credentials, but it's partnerships with industry and business and schools. So it's part of your education. We've just got to develop more ways of, of doing that. And I would say even now after COVID, kids. Struggling more than ever and trying to find ways to keep them in school and keep them engaged and keep them moving towards some sort of goal and aspiration.
Really cool. I heard something the other, I think it was at a board meeting recently. I don't remember who said it about, uh, about satellites from the technical center.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody said.
There are a lot of those in place. Yeah, well, I was, I was, uh. Dude, so what a satellite program is, thank you, John. Uh, cause I stepped in a couple up last year. So down in mid-coast in Rockland, they've had a great deal of success. There's a beautiful school. If you ever want to visit mid-school, mid-coast school of technology, a brand new building overlooks the, the ocean right there. What they've done, a couple of the islands go to school there and obviously leaving the island to get out for. CTE school is really challenging. So they have satellite programs, which currently the state funds. So there's potential to have a program through CATC, but not on their site, but a satellite site. And what's particularly interesting to me is most of those programs are something called exploratory. So we added a program last year in other district, uh, which was an exploratory program that we earmarked it for ninth graders and 10th graders. And they did a little bit of, of each of those programs. They did a little bit of carpentry, a little bit of electrical, they did a little bit of health sciences, just to get a feel of, of those. But the satellite is because you can't get those kids to the site, though if they can do it, or even if it's something can be done regionally, you know. It's, it's something worth looking at. So I haven't had a conversation with Nick Gannon yet. Um, he's the CATC director. There's something, I put a bug in his ear the other day.
I see that as a good avenue to getting kids exposed.
Oh, yeah.
And not necessarily, you know, you have to decide in freshman year, I want to go into the electrical trade, so I'm going to only do that program. It's like.
Try little things. That's what we did in shop. I mean, obviously I didn't take shop, like I said, back then, the girls would. Mrs. Duplessis, we had all max, but you know, you got a, I, I mean, I learned how to cook. I learned how to sew. I learned how to read a measuring tape. I mean, all those things that. It's hands-on stuff and the boys got the fun stuff, you know, wrenching on things and building things and, you know. So, but, but it, it, it exposed kids to so many different things and I'm sure. The first hammer you might have picked up and had serious, you know, skills with was Mr. Milligan. Yeah. So, you know. And then you said, you know what? I really like this. I wanted, this is what I want to do. And it kept kids engaged and kept them coming to school and they weren't going. I hate chemistry and I, if I have to listen to Mr. Young's one more day, I don't want to do this, you know? So, um. There has to be a way that, you know, we can serve more kids because as a select board member, people say to me, why are our taxes so high? It's not what we're doing. It's the RSU. I mean, it's what 75% or something of our taxes? So, you know. It's, it's pretty hot. I mean, it's more than the rest of the stuff. I mean, it's not stuff that people see. Yeah, their kids go to school. My kids don't go to school, but I care about whether the roads are plowed and that type of thing, but. It, it's, it's the question I get as a select board member. Where, what do our tax dollars do? So I think if people can see that and know what happens with it. And see the kids benefiting from it and in turn, the society benefiting from it, it's important.
I do think that we, as an RCU, can do a better job of. Uh, communicating to the communities what our students are doing and what they're learning, how that applies outside of the school building.
Yes.
Um, we've talked a lot about when we have students come to present to us, they'll tell us that there are celebrations of what's happening on the soccer field or. You know, on the basketball court, which we want to celebrate with them, but we, we don't always hear enough about what they did in the classroom and how that. Applied afterwards. So I do think we, we can do a better job of that, um, which will then, I think, help to have our, our. Communities better understand where their tax dollars are going.
Exactly.
Um, and then I also wanted to just touch on within the school counseling curriculums. Even down at the elementary and middle school levels, there are expectations that our school counselors are introducing career to students at a, at a much younger age. Um, it's a difficult, it was difficult during COVID to bring people in even without, you know, with the Melmac grant. Um, which I believe at least Monmouth, we applied for it because they had an opportunity and they'll find out on Friday. Whether they got it. Um, but there are tools that counselors are using to introduce to students. Without them necessarily realizing it, um, recognizing skills and interests and how those apply. To engineering, to, um, working with children, to, um, working in carpentry and. Above and beyond. So hopefully, I think if we had an opportunity to do the exploration program and get kids out like. Hands-on working in the high school earlier, we'll see, we'll see that translate. But again, it's stuff that. That maybe the kids don't come home and talk about because they don't even realize when they're in third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, that they learned about. What their skills are and how that might apply to what they want to do in the future.
Is, is it in their legislation impacting that, all those programs that you mentioned? Is it? Is there anything or is it, uh, is DOE behind it or just?
Yes, yeah. So it's Cal Perkins fund. So it's federal funding for vocational education or career and technical education. Um, and there's a process and you apply for those like a year in advance to add a new program. So like. If anything like that was happening, it'd be, be done now for. Not next year, but the following school year, the approval process, but it's. Uh, and then he's looking at his face, uh, for it and trying to figure out where that can be done. So. I do think there's, there's some potential there, or at least then, you know, and even if we can engage. I think what I wrote, you know, if we can engage, you know, it's all the 14 students in that, so the top 14 could be a, a real game changer for them. Because all of a sudden school might start being a little bit more relevant and they're seeing. Like this fall when I was watching them and they've been learning how to read a tape measure or they're actually applying the geometry and, you know, I know Kent used to do that when I was principal with some of the. One big island stuff with, with some of our learners that it just. Came alive instead of just being in a classroom and not really making that connection. Which is a real challenge for, for teachers and I'd welcome any of you too, that anytime you'd like to come through the schools. Uh, we, we'd love to have you come through, just see what's, what's going on and, and, um. And I don't know if you've been in the new building, probably, you know, again, COVID's just really cramped. A lot of the stuff we're able to do. But also the academy and just, just coming through and, and, and talk to kids, talk to teachers and like, well, they set that up or do it with you or, you know.
The sentiments that existed in, in Richmond that led to their withdrawal. Do they exist in other communities that are part of the S, uh, RSU? And what is it? What motivated them? Was it they could do it cheaper or they wanted more control? What, what were the sentiments? That, uh, led to the withdrawal?
I don't think they know.
I don't think they know. Yeah. It's, it's some of the vague, uh, more control over things, uh, than, than. Doing it cheaper, it's, it's not driving it. They know that. They know they're not likely to save money. They. They had a budget, a rough budget that they used when they voted on that was going to be. was going to be slightly more. I think they're going to be in for some surprises when they try to hire these positions and, and have the same level of service that they had. They can spend quite a bit more money.
Do, 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 does the RSU, do you try to um persuade, persuade the communities that are in your, your, your union to stay with us, to stay in the RSU? Are you trying to spell that?
Yeah, I'm in day forty-something as far as school days, but I've um loved this morning. And again, I'm still supporting Richmond. I was in Richmond this morning and there were multiple teachers that shared with me like, I really kind of wish we were staying. Um, so it's not a, I, I would say this and I lived it, right? You know, I was a teacher and then administrator. You mean each community kind of experienced the last thirteen years differently. And each community is different. You know, Richmond's socioeconomic uh, makeup is very different than Hollow Farming. Hollow's very different from Farmingdale, even though it's the same high school. Uh, you know, some people had shared test scores, you know. And test scores isn't end-all, be-all, but they were struggling the year before. And I'm going back thirty years of my career. We, we were a school union for many years, Mom and Richmond. Some of those things, you know, there's different challenges. But there were some things too that, uh, that was done from different district leadership that was done a little bit differently at Richmond. Some of it was, they had new administrators and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try doing this today or we're gonna try doing that. And there were some bumps in those implementations. And then there are the other communities, I, I think for whatever reasons, we just kind of steered the ship a different way. So they, and they've had tremendous turnover in staff and teachers. And then there's just little things of the same things in Mom and that are, are just really, it doesn't matter where you are, that, you know, our policy is governed pretty much what we do as a school board. There's very few things, when we sit down and, you know, people say all these rules and these obstacles, most are handed down from the legislature, boom, by the federal government. We create policies, the, the board creates policies that we have to implement. And then main school management gives us recommendations. And our job is really making sure that our schools are safe. That, you know, obviously everyone extends, gets a great education and all that, but also that our schools are safe, that we're limiting liability for our, our communities. Um, things like access to gymnasiums, things like that. I've been really tough growing pains, you know, I was in Dresden yesterday and it was a, a similar conversation. Although we used to always be able to do this and that. There's a lot of things that have changed in the last thirteen years that have nothing to do with RSU. If you didn't have security like we do now in schools thirteen years ago, you know, it's starting. Um, so it's, there's a lot of variables that kind of go in there that people feel frustrated. Lack of local control is one you hear a lot. Um, and there is some truth to that. It's very difficult for a board. And again, my vision, my, my lens has changed just these forty days. It's really difficult to operate when you've got you know, even something as simple as three different student handbooks in three different high schools or nine different schools. And then once something does arise of a really significant issue and where the board is dealing with it, those things, you know, so there has to be commonality in a lot of areas too. So it's, it's just that. But I think the, the, the challenge is making sure you incorporate voices and people have voices heard. And you, you work with these communities to try. So one of the things you, you mentioned is, you know, like make sure we're out in Dresden a lot because they're, they're kind of an isolated little community out there. If you've been to Dresden and it's a very small school, but they're very proud of it. And it's the help of their community and just trying to make sure that their voice is heard the same as the larger schools.
I think a lot of townspeople have been frustrated by the turnover in the superintendent position and and the snafus of all of that and the impression that it gives. So.
Do you like to speak to just the board or whoever, let's speak to the, because I was hired as an interim. Um, they had a very good person at Gilbert. In my opinion, I think he was doing a wonderful job. I don't think the board anticipated, but I value that, um, how they're approaching the, the search and what they promised people in terms of transparency.
Yeah, man, I can, I can talk about what, who's happened. Cause I stay out of these meetings, so I don't know if I'm looking at who's leading this thing for the last, you know, few years and we're, uh, and we went through a process to find the best, you know, best person we could. We involved a, a pretty big committee of, uh, board members, staff members, community members. Teachers. I think we had sixteen people interviewing, you know, candidates to get down to the one and there, there was consensus there. Um, and it, it didn't work out for reasons. Get into and then the same thing happened again. And so this time we took a step back and then as the transition from myself to Donna, uh, as chair, uh, we said we need to step back even further and we're changing the process a little bit and getting uh, M S M A, Involved Municipal Management Association. They're helping us. The things that they're doing for us that we didn't have.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, I guess one of the things I just want to add to that is your candidates that you hire are only as good as the pools you create, right? So people have to apply and we can only select from the people, I mean, if you've ever done hiring, you know, you, this, this is your candidate pool. And you do the best you can with the candidate pool. And I think we've, we've made some, we've had some learning along the way. Some of our hiring processes, you know, our last two actually were of, you know, toward the end of that process. People had jobs, they were close to the start of the year. You know, and so they weren't as timely. So we know this time we're jump-starting. So while we may talk about Richmond, who's not going to be able to do anything until after March, we're going to send out our advertisement and get this all done by the beginning of January. So we have been meeting, we have another meeting tomorrow. It's a joint meeting between the policy committee and our personnel subcommittee to finalize the job description. You know, there's some draft proposal of the search process that's coming out. Many members on how we're going to search for those so that we can, you know, jumpstart that really early on. Have community members and people that are interested, we are part of this process and get that going. Um, you know, and they are, you know, M S B A is helping us, municipal management. You know, we did a survey of the communities. We sent it out to a variety, like as wide a spread as we could. We got a lot of positive, um, positive feedback, big feedback from the board, which wasn't any different than really what we had been figuring out on our own. Um, but I think it was really good to have that structure and the sort of, like, you know, like John said, step back a little further and let's something's not working, right? And I know I for one get a little frustrated with the press. It's not as bad as they perceive it when you see hollow areas, but it's that eight years in five years. Well, to some extent, we have assistant superintendents do what they're supposed to do. They stepped in, you know, to help out when the, you know, leaders aren't there. And so, you know, we, we're moving forward in that.
I think recognizing by asking M S M A that to provide feedback, you need, when things haven't gone the way you expected multiple times in a row, it's time to bring in fresh eyes, right? Who can advise and suggest, you know, where, where we needed to revisit our process.
So we had a lot of favorable, talked to a lot of people leading into this interim process. We had a lot of candidates apply. We're talking September, you know, this, the very beginning of school year, you know, um, and uh, you know, well, you must jumpstart this early. I've had a lot of people reach out already and say, when is your process starting? They're reading. You know. And so I'm feeling really positive about where we are. We're transparent this past time. Everything's out there for dates, times and measures so people can participate. You know, ahead of time what they're getting into. Um, I think that's what poses a lot of input for our people. So. And M S B A is also helping us with reviewing all of our policies to make sure that they're on target and that we that we have all the ones that we're supposed to have. This thing has really sort of you know, been challenging the last few years and making sure that we have what we need, that the whole meat statute and legal requirements, because we have knowledge. When we run into this now and been working with folks and, you know, attorney calls are like, you know, you guys got to fix this. Oh, hard to fix right in the middle of that process.
And I saw the survey and did the survey and the only reason I stumbled across it is because I went on to look at the school calendar for something.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I wouldn't, I don't have any kids in school, but I saw the survey only because of that. So I think the people that pay taxes probably didn't know a thing about that survey because they aren't on Facebook. They don't have kids in school. So.
That is one thing we started with is how to reach.
Exactly. And I, and, and I did it. So.
What is a good way to reach you?
What's a good way? Um, usually if there's a notice at the town office, you know, people, the people, you know, we have older people that don't look at Facebook or shouldn't be looking at Facebook. Nobody should. Exactly. So, you know, but, but the thing is, if there was a notice at the town office, a notice at the post office and, you know, places like that where people will see them at, at the library. I mean, you think of the number of older people that use the library that would see a notice there and be willing to go on and do a survey. So I, I went through this with Joe Fletcher. You can't put something on Facebook and think that people are going to see it. Especially older people that you're trying to attract to a rec program. You know, that's not going to happen. You have a little slip of paper and at the, you know, when people go to vote, to let them know that we're trying to gather information about uh, adult rec programs, you know, that you've got to just think think people that don't use. Putting something in the community advertiser in the, in the. I know.
Take us three weeks to actually have it show up in the.
Turn accomplishing, they do a good job. I think if you put stuff in there, they're pretty easy to deal with. Yeah.
No, I don't always get it. We don't always get it.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. So I think it depends on what the post office thinks they can develop and deliver, but.
Or I forget, I just also wanted to say that, just cause go back to a conversation a second ago or a minute ago. Um, C A T C has an open house coming up, uh, January nineteenth. And so, you know, I do invite folks, I don't know how widespread, I wasn't familiar with that and my kid went there. So, um, but I do would encourage folks, if you have a chance to go check that out, it's an evening. Uh, but it gives an idea of what some of our students are actually doing in the woodshop or in the fire science or they have an E M T program over there. You know, and uh, you know, plumbing, they have, they have a lot of different areas and programs, but you know, to see culinary, get a, a chance to check it out. Even if, you know, people that are coming up and they're not quite there at that, you know, junior, senior year, and I'm totally with you. I'd love to see some freshmen be able to open that door to that. Um, but to bring their kids over and check it out and see hands-on, I know the schools do offer that. Um, but I think it's a great time for parents and families to see it too. And that is the nineteenth of January. I think they'll only do it once. So, um, you know, try to put that out there and I'll try to send something to, but we just learned about it last week. So you know, we do have a school board rep that is a member, uh, member team over there.
Would it be beneficial if we shared the numbers of students that are participating in that from mom and so that you knew, like, we have a certain number of slots?
Yeah.
And then to know how many applied and how many were filled, do you think that would be each?
I, I'd always be interested in seeing what kids are, you know, getting and having that type of information. So. So.
So previously, you know, we were, again, I think because of all the aspiration work and exposing kids, you know, we were we're rolling around twenty-two to twenty-four a year and we had, sadly, we were doing interviews because, you know, based on the school population, but we may have two spots in electrical. And we have five kids interested and, you know, we, we would interview, we, we had a whole rubric for it. Uh, this year it's down and I think this is, from memory, I think it's like thirteen students and and I honestly believe that a big impact with, with the exposure of not getting, you know, it's small-town kids sometimes just, it sounds silly, but just getting milk to Augusta and, and leaving their safeness here. And the more they're exposed and this group wasn't ready to do that just because of all the restrictions, but and, and also the outside people, you know, all those things they couldn't do. And I think all schools are seeing that. I did it in Shreve Bay and other schools.
Feeling comfortable with it, really importantly. Locking your room with four other communities.
I think also we've started to, I hate using COVID as an excuse, but we became so comfortable with Zoom and offering all of these things online and thinking it would help give access, say, oh, you don't have to come over and see it because here you can just log on from home. It's not the same or, um, those, those groups taking the entire, the day and going around to their sending communities and doing their you know, song and dance, for lack of a better term. It, it is different. If, if the carpentry instructor is sitting, talking to me and showing me, it's very different than if I log on and see a slideshow presentation.
Well, I mean, I never would have been a dental hygienist if I hadn't had the opportunity with Mrs. Morris in honors class to go sit with a dental hygienist for the day and see, you know, what she did day in and day out, not just cleaning my teeth. So having those opportunities for kids to go outside the school and experience things or have a dental hygienist come into the school and talk to somebody about I, and I did that in Lewiston for their program and their, their C and A program. I knew somebody teaching that and they asked me, well, actually she lived, you know, on Main Street. That was her name. Yes, yes. And she asked me to, to come down there and talk to the, I mean, this was a long time ago. I mean, thirty years ago, but I mean, no, I'm, we're not dental Ricky. He'll always be Ricky. Cause that, that's the only name I've ever called you. I, I can't, I can tell you the names that he's called.
Moving on.
When are you gonna, uh, do the superintendent search or? How's that going?
When, um, we're putting that application out, there, the announcement out in January. So the timeline, was I near the timeline?
So tomorrow evening we'll have a proposed timeline. It's, that's on a piece of paper yet to be typed up by me, but it's on a piece of paper. Um, but the timeline, you know, has the ad roughly going out the first roughly the first week or ten days in January. Uh, we do have, um, we do also have to send out a communication to community members for represent, for people that are interested in rep, being a representative on the committee. We'll have a, a reading committee for review, initial review, and then we'll have an interview committee. Uh, I was just talking to our Emmy, uh, our, um. Keep going here. So, um, it's the end of day. It's been a long day. Um, so you, you know, talking about the representation, we need a variety of people. Um, they all have to do training because we have to have, you know, training on confidentiality and just non-discrimination and bias and all that other conflict of interest, how to do a search. It takes some time. So I have a timeline out there of, you know, what the commitment will be, because a lot of people are really busy. And so what is that commitment? And so I want to make sure that people understand. You know, if you start the process, you have to be there for all the interviews. You can't just go to two and not be the other, because then your decision, you can't be a part of the decision-making. And so, you know, I want people to really understand that commitment is pretty extensive. Um, and we want a really good job and we want a, you know, a really good, uh, cross-section of representation.
Well, Mr. R R B applying, do you think?
Are you asking me that or are you asking?
And I, I came back because I really value our, our communities. I do, and I know that we've been through some bumps, so we're just trying to help, up lead. And our assistant superintendent was an elementary school principal, um, Christie Clark. And I think she felt the same way, so we're doing it. This is a good opportunity to see him. It's a very challenging, like you said, Doug, but it's a very it's a very challenging job and, uh, so I'm, I'm learning something new every day too. So.
Of course, I'm very blessed.
It's a public meeting though.
Keep in mind, it's all on video.
I know. So be really careful about what they say because it's a personnel match.
Exactly.
Got the hook.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a taxpayer question. So roughly sixty percent of what folks have to pay in property taxes goes to the RSU. And I think that's an important investment. Um, can you give us an idea? I mean, I I realize that of that sixty percent, about eighty cents of every dollar has already been predetermined, more or less through collective bargaining agreements that have recently been renewed. And so can you give us a sense, please, of um, what taxpayers ought to be expecting over the next year or two in terms of uh, the resources that the RSU is gonna need in order to honor those agreements?
So what I can contribute to this conversation is that based on the newly negotiated contracts, um, those alone, we're looking at just on salary, a two and a half percent increase between two point three and two point five. Um, and as salaries increase, the benefits, you know, because there's percentages to match that. So overall, I would say two point eight to three, um, excluding health insurance. Um, as Rick mentioned, we are just beginning the budget process and the F Y twenty-four budget is gonna look very different from the F Y twenty-three. Normally, yes, I could sit here and say, well, based on F Y twenty-three, it's gonna look like this. But I haven't had the opportunity yet to literally pull out every bit of Richmond to get to what is the the bottom, you know, what's the starting budget? But just based on salaries, based on the contracts, it's two and a half. And then with the additional benefits, two point eight.
I think anytime you can beat whatever the inflation rate is for everybody, you're doing a good job.
That's, and we've done that consistently. I know it. Any increase is harder, but we've consistently been under inflation. Um, we took a hard look negotiating those contracts last year, what what the trends were. Um, you know, half of our, I think, I asked, half of our employees of RSU are also residents of the RSU. So it's not like these employees are all people from away that we're giving this money to. They're our our neighbors as well, and they're feeling, you know, the same increases that us are feeling and, you know, the groceries and things like that too. And so, um, we looked at that stuff long and hard. Um, we actually put a lot more emphasis into our our hourly employees last year, those, um, those wage rates were not as competitive with everything that's happened, you know, with jobs, you know, surrounding us. And so we were not able to attract people to the RSU with the wages we were offering for those hourly positions. Those are positions that are critical to keeping our schools operating, whether it's the custodians or ed techs, those are all hourly positions, um, that we can live without. And so we really need to keep that competitive to to attract people to our district. Service, service.
Sure.
Transportation. You're you're seeing all the districts around having trouble hiring those positions, you know?
Uh, how much turnover are you seeing in terms of? I mean, uh, uh, is it a ten percent turnover? Is it a forty percent turnover in terms of employee?
It kind of depends on the the school too.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to, and I wouldn't feel comfortable throwing out a number, but I'm happy to do to do that math. I will say our turnover is is relatively high. But we do have schools where we tend to stay consistent and other schools where the turnover is higher.
I mean, it is, uh, you know, we're we're all dealing economics and supply and demand and you know, state across the country right now. I mean, it's, there's not many people going to education profession sadly. So attracting and retaining talent, I mean, and where mom is located, where hollow is located, you you can be pretty competitive as 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 a potential teacher, central administrator, and, you know, we are competing with those those other areas. So we if we want to be an attractive district, we want to retain the people that we have, obviously, is a is a key point too. And, you know, the hourly people, it's 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 really challenging because right now, you know, if you can get twenty dollars an hour working at, uh, you know, fast food establishment or you know, and we're we're up against that, but we also know we can't sustain, you know, we can't compete with that. Um, but, you know, we're still trying to find attract positions that are there to support students and majority of time, illegal documents with I E Ps supporting kids. So, and you can Google this. I mean, it's not unique to RSU too. It's all across the country, across. But one of the things we will be doing is is just looking across the district and looking at, you know, enrollment trends and staffing and and trying to make those difficult decisions.
I would like to invite any of, I mean, we will have it published pretty quickly, but we do have a an outline of what our budget process and our meetings are coming up, you know, because we always have to put extra ones on our own calendars outside of those regular committee meetings. And so, you know, you're they're public, they're in the central office, we welcome anybody to attend at any time. And I know I said this to in the town meeting on Monday when we went over, um, to Hollowell. I totally get that it's another meeting and everyone's super busy because we're all in the same boat. Um, so just inviting you doesn't always do it. Just say, hey, there's an open invitation. Um, I will do my best to let you know when those are and if there's, if there's an agenda or something that I'll let it there, you know, at least is either one of you that is able to come or participate when there's a hot topic. And then certainly let us know. John is chairing the budget committee this year, and so I think we all have a pretty good solid handle things and we're happy to answer questions and we're happy to come back.
Well, thank you for coming. I think it's been very enlightening to meet with you all and I appreciate your company. And Rick, I'm, I I want to offer my sympathies. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna leave, but I think I'm taking some of these guys.
College, just as the meeting started, I just pulled in the driver. I put you on real early, she didn't have to listen to the rest of it.
Well, you know, it's his first wrestling meet of the season, you want to follow, follow.
Thank you.
Are you finally moved it? Good for you. The Christmas stuff. I got a half of them and a half.
I didn't have shower boots, so I had to still shower.
Bye, Merry Christmas.
Onto rule of the minutes from the last meeting.
Really long. Yes. I didn't see anything as I skimmed.
It was a couple of things that.
What did you find, Mike?
Like me.
Oh, I thought it was not some bit weird name. Oh, that's right. Exactly. You've got it.
Yes, where where I had talked about the road that had washed out, they wrote it as Eagle Brook rather than Beaver Brook.
Yeah.
Um, and then in the line above that, it it almost seemed like maybe a couple of items had gotten confused together. Uh, where it said Kent reported meeting with the Monmouth Water Association. He said there was a conversation on the progress with the North Monmouth Survey and feasibility study. Uh, there was a rough draft of their engineering work. Um, and I almost think we kind of transitioned into the Wagon Bridge right there, um, which doesn't have any mention of. And then Kristen said, uh, commented that she had watched an online meeting about it and it probably wouldn't happen until twenty twenty-five.
So maybe just an interlude of a sentence.
That having to do with the wagon.
And then to go to the wagon bridge.
Um, yes. I I just thought that was kind of tying into the water association thing and it.
Yeah, it's not relevant. Just two separate topics.
Put it out to your.
Sure.
And another thing I saw up top in the department reports, maybe there just could have been another word added in. Uh, Paul Ferland, police chief, said his department had been fairly quiet with about two hundred and fifty complaints. The next sentence is, he will have a breakdown at the next meeting. About yeah. Yeah. Seems a little funny to me. I may want to add another, he will have a breakdown of those or whatever.
I make a motion, I make a motion, we accept the, uh, minutes with the, uh, friendly amendments that that have been suggested.
I'll second that.
So, um, Ken has made a motion, Chris has seconded it to approve. The, uh, uh, dangers that have been recognized, all those in favor.
Normally I wouldn't know because I wasn't here, but I did watch it on, uh, YouTube, so I.
So you can. Uh, onto um, department reports.
One department against.
You all have my breakdown. Okay, um, November. At a total of, uh, two hundred and fifty-one complaints. Again, I provided, uh, that brought up a good point. The first thing you say has the breakdown by capable weeks, hours of debate, those represent the the number for police department. Long report you get, um, it breaks down every complaint. That covers warrants, forces, EMS, and the fire department. Everything that has been just that with down among you through through the winter season, we decided. I thought that was was important for you guys to get to see the, um, all the specifics from all three of you. That's why I included all three in that report. But, um, Officer Byron's back to work, yay. It's, uh, it's been a long six, seven weeks without him trying to fill all the gaps, but back unrestricted, working a hundred percent and like having that. Um, the sun, coming Sunday, we're gonna be training with the new tasers, um. Once the the training is done, the officer is certified, they'll be, they'll be able to carry those pages. Anybody who's willing to come down and and, uh, help us out, of course, welcome.
Volunteer Joe.
Um, we just got, um, human detox and the control vision, so they're not having to carry their laptops from the cruiser to inside. And and this was one of the important aspects that we needed on our C G S audit. Was to be hardwired into the into the system where we're running license checks and queries on people there. Yeah, wirelessly, and that was one of the problems with the station because it was a wireless connection. So we've got those two computers, uh, in installed up and running. Uh, the only other thing that that the next step is gonna be to get a server in so we can network all those units in the office together. Uh, still struggling to fill the ownership on the weekends, um. And part of that, hopefully, part of that problem will be solved because we did hire a new reserve officer named Zach Roy. Um, came to us from, he worked full-time for Auburn P D for about nine months, uh, came to us, uh, work reserve work. His father lives in, his family lives in in Monmouth, near downtown, I know. Yeah, they're based with the community, they're up in Monmouth. Went to the Monmouth schools. Actually, we went to St. Don's. And they're presently living in Lawson right now, but they have plans in the future to move back to Monmouth, so. Um, welcome him aboard and it'll be about twelve to fourteen weeks, get him through the F T O process and get him on the road. Work on himself. That's a, that's a, uh, a a good plus for us, hopefully be some of the weekend issues we're having. Um, I know you haven't had time to really look at the the report that I submitted to you. Um, if you have any questions?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Because I did have a chance to take a look at your report. Um, uh, and I think this is why, uh, it's so important for us to see this level of detail. It seems to me like, uh, uh, things have changed in terms of when it is your your officers are receiving calls. Like, it maybe has to do with the season and the weather.
It's seasonal, it is seasonal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, whereas in the summertime, a lot of stuff was happening Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It seems like now that the colder weather has settled in, things, things are occurring on midweek or maybe spread out a little more.
Yeah. Correct. And 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 you'll see that as as the months go on, you you'll see that cyclical change go back and forth every year. Uh, you'll also see the change in in the hours, uh, into the nodes where you're gonna start seeing overnight stuff. Uh, because people are traveling. Snow on the road. We're gonna start getting the calls for.
Car off the road or whatever. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I thank you for the level of detail.
You have a question? I don't have any questions, just a comment. I want to say thank you for the dinner that you guys put on on Sunday. That was a very good meal. Also, thank you to Donna, because I think she probably had a a good hand in that dinner, but, um, yeah, very much appreciated. That was a nice, nice meal. It was a nice gathering. Yep. Get everybody together and celebrate this evening. Thank you again. Thank you. Next is, uh.
Mr. Ken, I talked to somebody at D E P today. He was more involved in sanitary sewer discharges, things like that. He says his area doesn't have anything um, in North Monmouth, so he gave me a contact person for groundwater. Um, we're over there to look at the consent, uh, consent decree if there is one. Um, and, uh, he says they are open to the public. So if there is one, we can see the doctor. I appreciate you following up on that. And just just for, uh, if filling some background, I'd ask Justin to do a little digging, um, uh, and this has to do with the P pass issue in the groundwater at, uh, uh, the North Monmouth, North Main Street area. Um, a couple of updates. First of all, you you can see there's been a rough draft of their engineering proposal, um, which is like ninety percent done. There's a little bit more to go, so there's still chance for questions to be asked if if folks have them. And if they want to see a copy, they can see Justin, you can include your copies. Uh, uh, and part of that, by the way, is a community meeting. I've been contacted by a number of people who want to go. They they may not be necessarily in that neighborhood affected, but they're close by. They have questions. And Justin, if we get the opportunity, I think we should schedule a community meeting just so that everyone can be on the same page in terms of what's going on, what what is known, who knew it when, and what are we doing about it? Kind of kind of basic questions.
I think that may be part of their contract, the the engineering firm.
It it is.
What went on, I think, yeah.
It is. Um, a couple of moving parts, uh, to what we've discovered over the last month or so, um, that there is a we we suspect that there's this vague recollection of there being a a consent decree that was signed by the owners of Tex Tech. Perhaps back in the early two thousands, maybe late nineties, which they've been abiding by ever since. Um, which involves a number of requirements that they've agreed to that include, um, testing of well water, uh, for contamination and, uh, and also trying to help mitigate the contamination that's there using a number of different um, techniques. One of them is the bottled water that many of the members of the North Monmouth community have been um, have been enjoying for, in some cases, families have been doing this for decades. Um, uh, most recently, decades, yeah, most recently, um, Tex Tech, this is probably in the last couple of months, maybe maybe a month. Um, Tex Tech has been moving to, uh, very expensive water filtration systems that. very expensive water filtration systems that are effective enough to bring the level of contamination below the acceptable level uh for certain households, not necessarily everybody. Um, because it kind of depends on what the what the uh, what the what the background, the the baseline is, right? Um, and and even that baseline can change. Uh, and some of that depends on what's going on in the aquifer itself. Which brings me back to this consent decree, we're trying to get to the bottom of the consent decree because we can't seem to find a copy. We don't know exactly what the terms of the consent decree are, but we will find out.
Was the, who, was the municipality, I mean, was it out of Monmouth involved?
Well, if there was a consent decree written in the I I'm imagining that the town manager at the time might have gotten a copy, maybe.
Steve Dyer.
I don't know.
Who knows?
But we can't, we can't seem to put our fingers on it.
Was it a superior court case?
Don't know.
Oh, no.
Don't know.
No, D E P can they can engage in in consent decrees under law and under rule, and they can force companies to do certain things, and it alleviates the company of some some amount of liability as long as they comply with that.
We force the D E P.
D E P would, yeah. To go along with why it's been so difficult, the guy on the phone today says, I'm one of the only people that still work in this building. So as people turn over at D E P, he doesn't even know who they are because they're getting hired and working directly from home. So he says for him to go down his list to try to figure out, you know, who's in charge of each program is very difficult, but he gave me a list of of two longtime employees that he knows work in that division, he said, you can at least call them and they can point you to whoever it is that they might be able to help, so I've got two more names, so I'll call them, and when they call me back, um, you may have more information.
So there's, there's one alleged, and I was, I will say this, uh, it's alleged because we don't actually have the consent decree in five of us. Um, element to the consent decree, one alleged element of the consent decree are a couple of wells that work uh twenty-four seven. Uh, pumping water out of the aquifer and discharging that water into Wilson Street. And the idea behind this configuration, apparently, is to bring fresh groundwater in from the perimeter to those folks who have wells that sort of tap into that. And so by creating this sort of suction, you bring fresh water in and you take the most contaminated water and dilute it with uh the the flow of Wilson Street. The problem that we now have is that the test results and and those test results are actually part of this rough draft, so you can, you can see them yourself, those test results um show that these are the highest, very highest, I mean, it's good news, bad news, right? I mean, the good news is it's the highest test results are those wells. And we're talking, you know, safe is considered twenty parts per billion. And these are coming in at tens of thousands, twelve thousand parts per billion. So, we've based on the available science at the time that the consent decree was signed, this made sense. Not sure that it makes sense now.
Was this kind of a secret thing?
No, no, it was done on the public record, I'm sure. It uh
Some people in North Monmouth know.
Maybe, maybe not.
It depends.
Did the Water Association, I mean, I mean, not that now that they're involved in it, but was anybody else involved in this consent decree?
Uh, no, it was, it was an agreement between, a- again, we're on public record, I don't want to say anything that isn't completely accurate. Um, and so I don't know that I can answer that question without having the consent decree.
We're looking for it, that's all, that's all I was saying, I'm I'm making progress.
We're, we're looking for it, and there's a matter, uh, there is a matter of urgency. Because if we go to a public meeting, we'd like to have those facts in front of us to be able to answer all of these questions without having to use the phrase alleged or anything else.
Yeah.
Right?
And Tech's Tech doesn't have a copy.
I don't know.
Is there any way to uh, request?
I don't know.
Legally.
Probably not from them, I mean, it's a public document, so D E P should have it, it's just a matter of finding somebody that knows something. And it's a big department and nobody works there anymore, so when you call a building, there's nobody to be transferred to, so it's like you got to call this person on your cell phone, and you wait for them to call you back, it's just it's more complicated that everybody's all at home, that's all, it's harder to get information out of anybody. Would you like me to continue with this one?
Yes, fair.
Yeah, I'll, I'll finish up on this and so um, the audit for fiscal year twenty-one is almost done, where we sent the uh Mark. Mark is going to finish up um some of the stuff that we are not capable doing in the office at the end of this week. And then uh he should have everything that he needs to complete his work on that one.
Justin, do you think we could have a conversation with them? Uh, are we going to wait for them to finish twenty twenty-two, or should we have, can we have a conversation with them?
Uh, we may be able to, do what I'll have to ask, because the problem that we're running into for doing twenty-two is that they're, all the fiscal year thirty, all the, all the all the twelve thirty entities that they audit are all going to end here in the next couple of weeks, so January, February becomes a very busy time for their calendar year audits. So they're going to be moving away from us for a while.
Right.
Um, Mark's going to work on our financial statements, so that when they come back, we'll at least have that to work with, and whenever they have free time in their schedule, they'll get to the twenty-two. Sometime in the spring, probably.
So, so uh, so would we be able he- here's our challenge, we're, we're, we're starting up the process of budgeting. Um, if all we have is an audit that's a year old, it sort of tells us, you know, what happened when the music stopped in July of twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Um, then we're still in a situation where we don't know super precisely what our financial situation is.
Right. We're at the mercy of the auditors, they have a schedule, uh, we missed it a long time ago, and we're trying to play catch up, so now we have to work around their their schedule at this point.
Right, so uh, so if they're almost finished.
Yep.
Which is
He says he has till the end of the month to work on us, he thinks he can get it done. So that's what we're hoping, when January rolls around, they're going to move into their
Excellent.
Into their next batch of audits.
I have a suggestion, uh, at a minimum, um, on the twenty eighth, we have another meeting scheduled for the twenty eighth, select board meeting.
Yeah.
Could we invite them to make a presentation?
If they haven't submitted you the final audit, I don't think there would be a point uh to it yet, you're going to want to talk to them once you have the audit in front of you with all their findings.
That's correct.
Yeah. I don't, I I'd be very surprised if I'm going to have that by next Thursday.
Okay.
So it could be sometime in January, if I can, if I can get them to have a time to come in. It may be by Zoom or something, because I'm not sure how much time they have, but certainly, yeah, I can set up and once they have the final audit, certainly you should be able to have a conversation with them, that's part of their engagement, it's for you to be able to ask the question. Yep. Um, I put in your, I put, I put on the table here a real rough draft, Ken, this goes to, this goes to answer your question, value increases.
Tell me, tell me.
So if you look, if you look at this left-hand column, I tried to write on here, Donna did these calculations for me today on a it's, it's a little more complicated than part of people's intuition, but so if you look, now those left-hand columns, the numbers of the fiscal years, those are increases in non-tiff value in each of those in each of those years. So in nineteen, it was one point nine million, and twenty, it was three point three. Twenty-one, it was two point four, and and this year it was three point four.
And that's without regard to the TIF?
It's without regard to the TIF.
Okay. And then what's going on in the right-hand column?
So the right-hand column at the top is just, just showing the totals in the tip amount, so the four hundred and six million uh, is the total value of the town, and then the six million is the tip, that's for twenty-one, the one underneath it is twenty-two. It's basically so she can do the calculation here at the bottom, so four hundred and nine million, six seventy-seven is the total. There's a nine million dollar total increase for that year, and she takes that out, it's three ninety-nine. And then um uh that next one there, the C M P value, that's that, that's a six point five million, you see it's a C M P increase, it's in her cursive writing, so she's, so she's then removing that. So the total increase is nine point nine million minus the six point five equals three point four million in all other value increase. So that's how she had to calculate that.
Point four is the same as exactly
Same as the twenty-two.
Right?
Yep, it just, it's just to show you how that, how that has to calculate. Now, this is very back of the envelope, because you have to realize that as when the, when the ratio falls, the homestead exemption falls, and that that value that's no longer exempt gets added back in. So you can take this calculation out a lot further if you want, but this is a real back of the, gives you a good idea about what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So thank you for getting this information.
Sure.
Um, I I find it interesting that the progression of numbers that that twenty twenty-one actually goes down. So if you look at nineteen, it's one point nine million increase, twenty is three point three million increase. Twenty twenty-one is a two point four million increase, and twenty twenty-two is a three point four. So if you recall, twenty twenty-one was sort of the middle of the pandemic, when there is a bunch of building going on, everyone is staying home, doing renovations. There's very, I mean, there's so many renovations going on that hardware stores are running out of building materials. And we're showing a net decrease.
Twenty-one would be April first of twenty-one, so you're actually talking about nineteen or twenty. And then twenty is actually talking about town again, right, because we don't build houses here in January, mainly, for the most part.
But I mean, if it's been our experience in the last three years, we wouldn't be, I mean, the, the, the point of this data, and this is super helpful, because we've got a little bit of uh, we're not just hypothesizing. Um, I think the point of of this data is if there were non-permitted work, a substantial amount of non-permitted work that we are not charging taxes for.
Yep.
Um, uh, we would be seeing a pattern that we see right here, which is uh, a loss of a, of a, of a million dollar increase in valuation. Uh, in a year when intuitively we're all thinking, wait a minute, there's a big building boom going on. People are making renovations, people are building all sorts of things because they can't do anything else. So, uh, so my question would be like, okay. Um, if this kind of is another data point that says maybe we're missing a bunch of valuation. My question would be like, what can we do about it as a select board?
My thought on it, the only way that you're going to remedy that is on the next reevaluation, when every property is looked at
With a microscope.
Yep, and and it's something where we may want to think about, start setting money aside to make that happen sooner than later. Um, usually where it's like, oh, we should do it every ten years, and it turns into fifteen or eighteen because of the cost of it and all that. Um, but it may be something we want to start thinking about.
Right.
Planning for. I don't know exactly when the last one was done here.
It was, it was, the actual, the last revale, I believe, was two thousand and seven, but there was an update done in two thousand and seventeen, and it's basically like a market adjustment, so they come in and they take a high-level look at at neighborhoods and things, and they just factor up neighborhoods, so they were
Statistical thing.
That's right.
Based on samples, not based on
That's right, nobody's going out and trying to see how many people illegally retrofitted their basements and added bathrooms without permit, you know, people do that o- o- over time, so you have revales done so that you can catch that, that's not the best of your ability.
Still really from two thousand and seven, we kind of started thinking about it, it's probably still going to be a couple of years away, we'll be going on eighteen years. You know, by twenty twenty-five.
Oh. What's what's the purpose of this?
We had a conversation at our last meeting.
Okay.
That said, hey, uh, we because of staff, of staffing issues with our code enforcement office.
Okay. Lost, we, we missed.
It's, it's, it's highly likely that we have missed uh a lot of
Building
Building taxable, building stuff that was done without a permit.
And I think the people came to the town office and had every intention of trying to get a permit, but because we didn't have people in place to make that happen, um, they found out that there really, the town could not prevent them from building something, just because we didn't have someone to oversee that. And they kind of said, well, okay, I'm going to build it.
And of course, once that horse leaves the barn
And we don't know.
Then people don't even come into town hall, pull, pull a permit.
Right, in addition to that, when you got all kinds of people sitting at home for eighteen months in their house, not a lot to do.
Yeah.
They start renovating things, whether or not they pull a permit, and obviously, you know. People do that anyway, but when you've got lots of free time on your hands, they probably did it a little more, I mean, just, just look at the amount of trash that was going into transfer station, and people were gutting their kitchens, I mean, they're doing all kinds of cool stuff.
And even, and even some of the ones that did get a permit with the turnover of the code enforcement officer, potentially, some of those permitted jobs didn't get turned over to Donna, so she could change valuations on the property, just go out and visit them after, yeah.
So we're going to, we're losing our guy.
Yes. He got a full-time job in Manchester, so you can't really blame him.
Right, so what, what are we going to do?
We're going to advertise for it, that's all we can do. See who applies.
And there'll be a period of time when we won't have a code enforcement.
He's here through basically almost the end of the month, I think, till like Christmas. We'll have to figure something out.
We've been in that position before, where Bernie filled in and helped out and things like that, so.
I guess fortunate, it's, it's this time of year, so it's kind of a little slower than
Yeah.
maybe the spring will be.
When we hire, is there an opportunity to find somebody who would be available to uh, do more of the enforcement piece of it? So that we've got some level of proactivity rather than just a reactive guy sits behind a desk and issues permits?
Sure, but it's kind of unrealistic for like someone who who's going to be, you know, that you're going to hire off the street or something like that, to, to, to know whether someone is illegally attached a deck in the last six months, like they just, it, it, they, there's no way short of like a neighbor calling and complaining, generally, there isn't, you know. There's only so much you can do, I mean, if you notice it happening and you know there isn't a permit, it's one thing, but someone goes down some camp road and builds a deck on it, I, I, I mean if you don't know what's happening, and you don't know what's happening, and there's not really a way for you to know.
We got this one letter from Steve O'Donnell.
Yes, I saw that, yeah, I was, I was copied on that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I think it was just you and me, Doug.
So is, is the letter on this topic?
It has to do with code enforcement.
Some of it does, some of it is just, just solar, walk around down there, it's just a bunch of, it's just, there's some logistical things in there about what's going on with the planning board.
Good enough. You have more?
Um, oh, and then I put, I also put in front of you the yes, the budget schedule, that's all, by the way, that's, I'm all set.
As we are reviewing applicants uh, for this code enforcement position, is it possible that we could uh be mindful that if some applicants have a level of local experience that would give them the ability to be able to say that deck didn't exist three years ago? And here's the property card, and it's not on the property card. Um hey, Donna, let's add a deck in. Uh, would that be possible?
Absolutely, Ken, remember the last time we went through this, we, we, it was opened three times and we didn't get any applicants, so I, I wouldn't be expecting there to be, you, you know, unless someone in this room plans on applying, I wouldn't expect there to be, you know, fifteen people banging down the door that are all certified, and it's just, it doesn't exist, they do, this is this is a profession where I'm, I'm actually very surprised that someone hasn't gotten the bright idea to open a, a company like assessing firms do that has a license and bring in all kinds of young inexperienced people, and you could make a ton of money. But they just don't exist, these people do not exist in this state right now, there's a buried, every, we're not alone.
Sure.
Wintrop would love to hire a second person, they can't find one, hey, that needs more out, every town around us is looking for people, they do not They do not exist. For the most part.
Howard, Manchester.
Well, they were part-time like here. He's he's put his time and they and they stole Richard from. Uh, Belgrade, so all all we're doing is we're poaching the few people around. And he's over there because they gave him a few more hours in codes, but then he's doing something for the fire department. So they made him full-time. And they made him full-time over there to try to make it attractive, I think, so he wouldn't leave, I mean, that's that's kind of how.
It's all about retention.
That's right, but sometimes you pay for more than you need so that you can keep it.
But I mean, I had mentioned a property to him and saw that it got cleaned up for the moment, so I mean. Obviously, somebody said something to somebody after I said something to him, so. So I mean, I I don't think it was for lack of, you know. Effort and and like I said two weeks ago. He doesn't live here, it's not like he has every house memorized to know whether something has happened or not, so it's. And pulling a permit is all on the honor system and if somebody. Decides they're gonna renovate. Their bathroom and bedroom and everything else, a lot of people like, oh, I know that's. Even happening and just proceed as usual, I mean, that happens.
That's understandable. But nonetheless, you know, someone builds a garage that doesn't exist on the property card.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but what's gonna be more important, him working with the public on new? New permits or is he gonna be going through every property card and trying to figure this out? I mean, that's not realistic that it's gonna happen, that's not gonna happen, so I think. Whoever does come has to obviously. Do the first three things on his job description that are the most important, so, you know. Or whatever that may be, it won't be. Comparing the property card to the house and so. We'll just keep our fingers crossed.
Our select board report, I just had one thing for Justin. Is there any way that maybe Mark with all his computer skills could show us? What relationship the town has as far as their debt? Um, it seems like we've got a lot of things that we're currently paying for. Before we move into this next budget session, I would like to have. Um, something that shows us this is what we have for current, we're still paying for fire trucks and we're still paying for sidewalks on Academy Street. Just to show us. Before we add any more debt, um, it would be really interesting to see what we currently have on the book.
Linda had actually put together a a capital plan that kind of goes out and it shows all the items. And it shows when the debt service will fall off and when it picks up, so I'll bring that to you as part of the budget process and you can see at the bottom there's a total and it kind of shows. How the debt service is, it has been kind of ramping up over the last. RKO will tell us what our outstanding debt is, but this will give you a good idea what the payments, what the debt service is that that impacts the budget. Yeah, you're correct.
So it's interesting you bring this up, Mark, because I noticed on the. The last financial report that we got, um, I had a couple of questions, I I wasn't at the meeting where the paper was distributed, but I was able to get a copy. And um, it looks to me like as of the end of November, the debt service is slightly over budget. And uh, I was wondering if there are any more expenditures expected during. During the fiscal year is is is. Is that it?
I don't anticipate there to be any more payments coming out of those accounts, the reason those accounts are are higher than that is because we take out. We take out new municipal leases on on some of the items that we bought because we changed course and decided to buy like the used. Plow truck and the used sidewalk plow, I I can't bond those in the same way, so I have to take out a municipal lease through Anderson Skoggan Bank. So what we do is when you take out a lease, you have to make the first payment in the year in which it was done. And the borrowing authorization in the budget kind of anticipated a bond payment, which wouldn't happen until our next year. So that additional funding will have to come out of the operating budget somewhere. So when we get to the end of the year, it'll be like, Dan. No more spending in public works, I need the money to offset. I'll come to you at some point so you can make some transfers.
As long as it's not gonna get any worse than the overage that I saw. Uh, it's fine.
Right, yeah, understood.
Um, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't gonna be any more expenditure.
No, that's a good catch, because that.
And and also along Mark's line, uh, asking for like a breakdown of. Of where the debt repayment. Is going, could we also get an understanding of? And and RKO has done this in the past and sort of given us a heads up in terms of where Monmouth compares to other municipalities. Um, what is a typical debt load for municipality with a budget such as Monmouth's? And where do we stand in comparison, say, Litchfield's got like. Four thousand people, how do we compare with their debt load? How do we compare with other municipalities with approximately the same number of people? And in addition to that, it would be helpful to know, um, to what degree we are paying off principal. Like every time we make these uh, debt payments. Um, I mean, the interest rates uh, on most of those nodes are three percent or less. Um, so the majority of the payment is principal payment, not interest payment. Uh, so it's one thing to know what your debt service is, but it's also another thing to know. How much principal we paying down every time we make a payment?
Big RKO. All that is of the we, yeah, what do we do, will you see the audit? He usually goes into that.
Um, I've got another thing for Justin, which is stickers, where are we on the on the transfer station?
They've been ordered and they, I I talked to Dan about this yesterday, day before, and they're, he's just waiting for them to show up. He thought he thought they'd be here by the end of the week, but we're just waiting on the vendor, so they're in Gardner, so it shouldn't. They'll just be here anytime.
For Justin? Dam repair, Cocknowagan dam repair.
How is the lake?
Oh, it's over winter. By about six, eight inches.
Yeah, we need to put the boat out.
All the lakes are.
We had so much full rain. Couldn't dump it off.
Right, but same in same in Anabasko, but they they can't really control the. Level on Anabasko very well. Where are we with regard to?
So as you may recall, we discussed it at a meeting a few weeks ago. Uh, you asked me to have the engineer put together the preliminary design so that we could get a better estimate, so they're working on that. They know that there isn't as much of a time crunch on this because there's nothing that we're gonna be able to do until after our our town meeting anyway. So I told them they didn't have to push, so I wouldn't expect uh, to get anything. I said, we definitely need to know sometime in March or April what your budgets are because we need it for that, and they said, that's fine, so I would expect. You know, February, March, we'll get. Uh, some type of preliminary design, that would be something that they could get estimates for us, so we have realistic numbers for budget.
Um, I did have a chance to do a second and third reading of the RFP, thank you for. This is the solar. Uh, RFP proposal and Justin was able to get. A preliminary thing off of the listserv for town managers, I'm assuming, MMA. And then he made a few changes with regard to Inflation Reduction Act. Um, I do have four things that you might consider adding to those. Um, one would be the provision that uh, whatever we build. Might assume a five percent increase in our electric use for the coming year. So rather than building based on our electric bills from last year, that we would look at our electric bills going forward. And add a small margin, you don't want to overproduce, obviously, but I don't think. Our electricity demand is gonna be going down anytime soon, so especially with the. With the new building coming online. I uh, also wonder if you might want to put together sort of a rough, like a paragraph that talks about implementation. Uh, something that might say construction is expected, uh, pending the approval of voters in June. So we're looking at a twenty twenty three construction process that might be in June or something like that. I don't recall if you had specified the actual location as the transfer station. Double check on that one, I.
The, I think we we've talked about this, but that's not a. Uh, favored site for public works.
The transfer station.
Or 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 the pit. They they, neither of them are favored. Locations.
Okay, well then we'll have to talk about that one. Um, nonetheless, I think maybe putting in a walkthrough. Uh, provision to say, hey, look, uh, there might be a day when. Uh, we can meet with contractors who are interested in making a bid. And walk with them to the different locations that have potential. To say, okay, here's what we've got, here's the place where we're thinking, here's another opportunity, here's the third.
Do we know any of other places that we're thinking?
Well, uh, on the list, and of course, we can all have our own priorities. Um, was the transfer station, the pit, or potentially out here in this open field?
Things like this. Because the towns, we still own a pretty good chunk of land right where the town office is, don't we? It comes onto Academy Street, that's another town-owned piece of property.
I'm open to suggestion, um, if it means that we save forty one thousand dollars a year. I'm 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 good with that. Uh, but uh, the 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 part that that attracts me to the transfer station is that it's already in industrial use. And it's already been approved by the voters.
But I I think the problem implies in the fact that we haven't brought the. Public Works people into this conversation.
But we can do that. But that's just my my one of five opinions and uh, and we could figure that one out. Uh, not for Justin.
Think what you want to say.
No, I'm I'm, I mean, I'm thinking of the, and obviously it's not suitable space for all of them, but the roofs of the buildings down there. Um, is there any way that they would locate some of the units? We have the roof covering the container, you know, the. Compressor container and the roof of the main building and. That's not using any ground space.
So it would sort of depend on the direction of the roof and the square footage and. Um, that does get a little more expensive when it comes to implementation, because now you're talking about installation that's up high.
The roof comes from all.
There you go, right out.
Flat new roof in in the library, I don't believe it'd be visible.
Because you wouldn't be able to touch Comston itself because it's historic property.
Where are we on the streetlight? That's all done.
From our side, it's just, it's gotta go through the CMP. Through their ranks, I mean, the president's signature is on it, so I don't know how long that takes to get in front of him.
Oh, Justin, I had one other.
Takes as long as it is for them to come to your property.
Yeah, I don't know. But they have all the paperwork that they want, they ask.
We left, I think we left the employee handbook. Question about uh, health insurance. Kind of that that a new employee would be. If they were, if they wanted to be covered by the health insurance plan from day one, they would need to sign statements saying they would. Stay on board for at least sixty days or ninety days or.
No, I brought that back to you and you guys voted, that's already been dispensed with, you guys voted on. It's that it will, it will now start on the the first of the following month when you start. Instead of right now, our current practice is is it's the, it's it's. It's a thirty day wait plus however, however long it takes you to get to that first of the following month after a thirty day wait period.
Okay, so that's all done. And uh. I think that's all.
I've I've got, actually, I did discover one more. Uh, question. Uh, for the financial analysis that was given. A weeks back.
From Mark?
There was, uh, as as you went through the financial analysis, there was a category that was called assessments and fixed costs. And that represented almost two thirds of our expended expenses. It would be super helpful if we could see a breakdown of that category, some detail of that. Uh, in in a similar format where there's. You know, what the actual is, what the budget is, what the variance is. Because it it really is two thirds of our total expenses.
This is a mark thing.
Yeah, this is the an accounting thing.
Anything else from?
Uh, the, I I noticed and it looks like they're working on the problem, but our beautiful new sidewalks that go down Maple Street. Um, have a significant amount of water running down and it has all turned to ice, everybody's driveway is a sheet of ice.
That's because of people, there's some pump that comes out of, yeah.
And I did see an excavator at one of the homes today, and I don't know if someone has gone and spoken with them about this. Or what, but they are, it looks like they're trying to remedy it, but there's still a couple of places where it appears to be coming out and it's wet, but. Something that I'm sure Dan has seen and is aware of and. Definitely needs to be addressed, uh, because it's creating a very, a big hazard for everyone that has a driveway that crosses there.
As as you know, driving up Maple Street on a cold morning and it's been wet. That some pump runs all the time.
Is that legal?
I have no idea.
Well, Dave could probably attest to it, it's you're supposed to maintain your runoff water on your own property, right?
Not coming down the sidewalk.
Old water generated on your property, yes, mitigated on your property. People have to put in septic systems just for the water run.
There have been some over the years, there was one right near the post office that for a long time went out to the street and I believe maybe it still does.
Because it's icy there too.
Yeah, I mean, and some people, they, I mean, they, whatever that comes out on the ground on their property, that it inevitably it just runs to wherever it goes and. It's up on the street sometimes.
You had a building, a basement collapsed. And that water ran out on the street every time.
And and how do we? How should this be dealt with?
Um, I'm I'm thinking that they're trying to deal with it right now and we're just gonna have to watch and see what happens. One of the homes that has the problem, I think the worst offender is trying to trying to remedy the situation. They did have a trench that they dug with shovels and maybe they were putting stone with a drain pipe in it, trying to get the water into the ground. Um, and I don't think it was gonna work, so there was actually a piece of equipment there to this morning. And I think they dug some kind of a pit maybe with stone in it or.
The driveway.
They're trying to keep it on their property rather than having it go onto the street, but it's just something that Dan's probably gonna have to keep an eye on and. If it becomes more, because the colder the weather gets, the more it's just gonna be ice and it's gonna build up and up and up and it's gonna be a problem, sure.
Anything else?
Uh, I had a chance to go uh, to the Woggin Bridge. Public meeting. Actually, um, had a nice conversation with someone from DOT. Who lives in Winthrop, by the way, and drives on that road every day, so knows it well. Uh, there again, they're continuing actually, even though the deadline has come and gone, I think December. Second was the deadline, uh, the deadline has come and gone, but they are still taking comments, they're not gonna exclude anybody who wants to put in a comment. Uh, it was news to them that they needed to accommodate some sort of. Access to the west of the Woggin Bridge. Like there there is, right now, we've got a giant concrete block in front of it because it's got this. Uh, restricted zone, but that restriction zone, I I feel passionately about shouldn't last forever. It's not a forever restriction zone, and so it was news to them that they needed to accommodate access to the north. Um, my suggestion was lift the bridge three feet and and you only need one access point and we're good. And there's their response was, oh, that's gonna be too expensive. The soils there are made of clay and we have to lift it that high, that's gonna be a problem. So, uh, so I registered my comment. Um, I I also uh, tipped off the. Um, I I also uh tipped off the police chief, I'm sorry, the fire chief, um because access to the the western side of that bridge is important to the fire department as much as it is to people who are canoeing, kayaking, hunting, fishing up in that area, so um I don't think I'm speaking out of school to say that the fire chief went in and registered a public comment about the necessity for being able to have access to the western side of uh easy, convenient access to the western side of uh of that bridge and uh and I I they were, I think they were genuinely appreciative of uh hearing about that. Um and I would certainly invite anyone else who wants to go out and register a comment, you can, it's super easy. And it will be, even though the deadline's come and gone, you can you can still do that, and it'll become part of the public record. And they're required by law to respond to every comment. And uh she promised me that she would be sending the select board a summary of the comments and all of their responses to those comments. So. Uh also, uh, this came out just recently, um, this is the rough draft of the engineering report. And it's got an executive summary, if you don't want to have to pick through all sorts of uh, you know, super detailed uh uh plans, um, a couple of highlights from the executive summary on this rough draft is that uh uh the total project cost according to uh the engineer that has done this feasibility study. Um and this includes a twenty percent contingency um is approximately seven million dollars. For uh a series of loops in North Monmouth that would cover all of the PFAS contamination that we know of today. Um, again, they're still continuing to do testing. They've got it on their list to test some additional uh homes uh that haven't either haven't responded or uh are still on their list to contact because they're trying to testing is expensive, it costs four or five hundred bucks a test. So they're trying to work their way out to the boundary of the contamination plume. Uh so it's kind of an incremental thing, but uh nonetheless, they think um a seven million dollar uh budget is uh a realistic data point. And that sounds like a big number to me. Uh, it's uh was a bigger number when we first started complimenting uh contemplating this. And originally, we were thinking, is a ten million dollar project? Um, part of this report also identifies some grants that are available.
A number of them, right?
Quite a few. Uh but a half dozen, and some of them in the millions of dollars uh that might be available. Um, we're gonna need some help, though, to get those grants. And some of that help actually comes from the citizens of North Monmouth. Because some of those grants depend on uh people disclosing what it is their income level is. I know that's a really touchy thing for a lot of people. But these grants uh that are available either through the state or federal level are income based, they're for communities that have certain levels of income that can't afford a seven million dollar expense and just write a check, right? And that's North Monmouth. And so we all need to be working with our North Monmouth citizens to say, hey, you need to fill out this little form that says, I live in North Monmouth and this is what my income is. So that they can put it in the file in an anonymous way. So that they can apply for a grant that will get a portion of that seven million dollars paid for.
Am I correct in assuming that Tech Tech has somewhat taken some responsibility for this, they are paying for things that are going on there, or are they paying for that out of the goodness of the heart, not out of a responsibility standpoint?
Well, we're on public record. So I don't want to say, I don't want to misspeak. But what my impression, my personal impression is, is that the folks at Tech Tech are trying to make the best of a bad situation. They're doing the next best thing. And uh if you take a look at the map here, you'll see a list of I don't know, about fifty different tests. That's what this chart is. It's about fifty different well water tests. Typical cost for uh well water test is about four hundred bucks. And a good portion of those have been paid for by Tech Tech. Um, I also understand that they're offering free bottled water to uh certain residents, they're offering free filtration systems to certain residents where the systems would be effective.
It seems like we just heard about one that was in the thousands of dollars for a filter system.
Yeah, either reverse osmosis with a charcoal filtration membrane and it's uh four or five thousand dollar system. And so there, I mean, the reality of the situation we've got there is that uh a lot of this contamination comes from uh what happened before there was a sewer system that Tech Tech could use to dispose of its waste. And so that means this was back in the nineteen sixties. Way before we knew what was dangerous and what wasn't, at least what we knew. And uh and there have been a lot of uh families and residents of North Monmouth that have uh had careers enjoyed careers at Tech Tech. So um, you know, Tech Tech is doing my understanding is Tech Tech is doing what they can and uh and standing by the people in that community uh who are their labor force to a great degree.
Uh next on the agenda is public comment. Uh, and then there is uh to consider the tax-acquired property uh this position policy.
Not sure if you want me to go through this or if you read it. I think it's pretty straightforward the way that it's written out, but if you have any questions, that's absolutely.
I I did go through it, I think there's um if you look at the first thing, it says with the except noted subsection two. I can't find subsection two. It's just the next, it's the says tax-acquired property. So that that should be Roman rule two then, right?
Yeah, it could, yeah, it could be, yep.
Um, the way uh the main statutes were to uh quitclaim deeds. Um, I have a copy of the statute, there's no hyphen. It's one word. Okay, quitclaim, right, so that's down in um that's down in number. I just had a question about the town can return the property to the taxpayer with the owner record at the time of acquisition or that taxpayer's successor in interest? What do they mean, what the, what's that?
Whoever would have inherited it or um or it could be the person, if it was the person and his and his wife, and they were married, but her name wasn't on the deed, but she would be the one that would naturally kind of inherit it, anybody that was related to that. Whoever would be the successor in interest in that property, it's a it's a property tax term that's used.
I I think that needs to be clarified, I don't define.
Yeah.
Because successor and interest, I mean, it could be somebody that um it could be someone that they quitclaimed it to. So I I I think that's probably matter. Um, I I looked at the numbered definition, land, land or lands. Modified by man or by man, I think the new statutes in Maine are try try to be uh gender neutral. So I think that probably should be replaced um modified by human activity. And let me see through the natural or man-made. I guess, would that be human-made? I don't know, that's a little clumsy, but if we want to be gender neutral. Um, prior owners.
Looking at the definition, oh, yeah, definition.
Prior owner. Um, but the problem with that is the person in whom the property most recently has signed municipal taxes. So the person that's assessed, most recently assessed. There's a difference between being assessed and and owning. Because for instance, um in Maine, if on April first the town changes the ownership, so someone else could own that property.
Right, but the person who is assessed, who who owes the tax is whose ever name was on it, on that would be whenever it was, it would be as of that April first, so for property tax purposes, you're always looking at the person that was assessed last.
Right, but someone else could own it.
Yep. So that's true, but the taxes are still owed. So for property tax, for for the for municipal lien foreclosure, we don't care who owns it now. It's still foreclosed upon. If you buy a property that has property taxes in arrears and you don't do your homework, you'll still lose it. It it doesn't matter that Kent gave it to Doug.
Why'd you choose me?
Doug is just out.
Well, that's right, I mean, because we warn people at closing that that the tax bill is gonna come out to the prior owner until
Until the next day.
First, so they have to be on guard about that, but but still um that, there's a new person who owns, and it is not the person who was most recently assessed. And all you have to do is look at the registry of deeds and know.
Right, but we cannot change. If I change the name on on any of that paperwork, it validates the whole municipal lien, it has to be, it has to be in the name of the person who was previously assessed.
Um, I I was suggesting a change on number three, generally, the town manager will determine how to best use, I I I said I changed, will determine to investigate. The town manager will investigate how to best.
Which which paragraph, I just wanted to try and make it.
Third one paragraph. Last paragraph, third section.
Okay.
Last paragraph. I think investigative is the better word. I don't have anything else.
I was reading in in uh section three.
Yep.
Um, and I know, and everything is probably worded correctly, but uh the town manager shall consult with department heads and the chair of the conservation commission. Um, so if we have a tax-acquired piece of property, and I and I know of an instance in Wayne where this happened. Uh, property owner did not pay the taxes um three, four years behind. Um, and there were certain persons on the select board that knew that that piece of property was gonna be acquired by the town. Um, and they already had plans for that property to turn it into recreational stuff for um walking trails and all that stuff, and when the property owner actually came in last minute with a check that covered back taxes, lawyer's fees, everything, and they said no, we won't accept it, and I don't think we should ever be in a position of we're acquiring property. Um, the most important thing is the property in the town stay in the hands of taxpayers, because once it goes into this type of um stuff, um there's no more tax dollars coming in from it. So as properties become, and and it does, everything in here says that it's got to be over approval of the select board. But there may be times when um property starts to get acquired um and comes off the tax rolls and it creates a bigger tax burden for the rest of the taxpayers. Just something to keep in mind.
What would you, what would you suggest to remedy that?
Um. I don't know, I don't know if there is, I don't know if there is a good solution, but it's something that we really need to be aware of. Moving forward, yeah.
And go, Robert.
Uh, the one in Wayne, I'm familiar with that story, yes.
Yeah, I I mean, um towns feel differently about that, like out on Chubig Island where I was before.
Right.
Every time it's a property uh was foreclosed on, they had any type of oceanfront access, they never gave that back. Because because there nothing.
In that community, access to the ocean, public access to the ocean was more important than anything out there. So whenever they had an opportunity to take either a path or or an oceanfront property, they would always put that into conservation. But that's just their choice, communities feel differently about that, so I certainly appreciate what you're saying. You know, um Joel had asked that this language we put in there, and I said in my template, it's in there as a as a consultation. Um, but certainly you folks get to decide that.
If you're in in the end anyway, so he may make a recommendation to me that says we want that to put it into into open space, and then it would be brought to you, and you decide whether you want to.
I'm guessing if you own a home on Chubig Island, the taxes are um as significant as they might be to a property owner in the town of Monmouth.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, all I was trying to say is every community has their own, has their own view on these things.
So under this, under the proposed language we have in front of us. Joel would, the the chair of the conservation com- commission would say, hmm, maybe we want to think about preserving this, and he would say that to the town manager who would who would forward that to the select board, and then the select board would uh would decide. Would decide.
Sure.
Yes or no, so be overseen by the select board at the time. And I I mean, the select board is determining this policy too.
Yes.
Or do we have to go to the voters to? We don't have to.
No, because the town meeting, uh, the warrant you put together every year has a warrant article that says, may the select board dispose of property that they see as in the best interest of the town, so that's your authorization to do it.
So we're, I mean if a select board of the future were to decide to make a change to this policy, they could, and then they could do what they wanted.
And we're legally protected.
Yeah.
We we can do this.
Yep, absolutely. Because so I don't know that there's one way or another, I don't know that trying to force a course of action for future select boards other than by voters voting the right people in, reasonable people into a select board.
Yep.
Right? Or or punishing those that have not been reasonable.
I don't, I don't think there's a change that's gonna be made that's gonna remedy the problem.
Right.
Um, it's just something to be aware of. You know, moving forward.
Right, right.
I'm suggesting we don't prove this tonight, that we table it and and get a fresh copy with corrections.
You want to think about it one more, one more two weeks, two weeks isn't gonna kill us, is it?
No.
How many, how many properties do we have on our list of potential uh candidates to consider this?
Probably twenty.
Twenty? Twenty that are waiting in the wings for us to take a look at?
Yes, once you have a policy, then I'll know how to proceed with each one. And and then I'll I'll bring them to you as we can put them together in a package that makes sense.
I'm assuming this went in front of our lawyer to look all this over to make sure all this was.
This is almost the, this is almost the complete uh copy of what the city of Bath uses, just so you know. That was the template, that's where I got it, yep. And they they went through a pretty extensive process, but just so you know that their review was through Bernstein Shore too, who was our attorney. And so this is basically their their work.
One other thing I thought, while we're talking about tax-acquired properties and all that, I did have a short conversation with the owner of the Bible Redemption Place in North Monmouth. Um, he was working to uh move stuff out of there. Um, he said for a while people were just backing up and and dropping uh bags of stuff off with a note that would say, this is my name and phone number, I mean, I want to get them counted. Uh, is really trying to discourage that. And then it got to the point where he had people that were backing in and dumping them off, and he said, we're closed, we're not taking anymore. They said, well, we dropped them off and we're just gonna leave, you can have them. So even though he was trying to stop, they were still accumulating, but it's my understanding that he was not taking anymore in, and he is in the process of moving a bunch of them out. And a lot of them had been moved in there from another facility that was not able to process them, so they were bringing them there, and now he is packing them and moving. So they were bringing them there and now he is packing them and moving them back to that facility. Um, but it's, it's a logistical, and the companies are very particular about the way they're bought. The alcohol bottles, uh, have to be boxed, it's shrink wrapped, and they are, they are picking up and they are hauling out of there. Um, and he did say that he got a visit from DEP, um, and they offered, what, what can we do to help you? And he talked with them for quite a while and, um. He is trying to make something happen, I don't know how much progress I've seen, but he's.
That is one of your twenty problems.
Thank you.
Yep, yeah. Thanks for that conversation, it's good.
So what happens, the, uh, the. The town lawyer, does a, um. Does a title search or, or goes back at some point to see who the parties in interest are? Let's say there's a mortgage on the property, how's that determined?
We don't, it, it doesn't matter, um, municipal, uh, municipal lien will wash all, all interest and every, everybody else, the bank's losing the position.
And how do we know they've been notified?
That is part of our due diligence, we have to have the green. Uh, certified mail cards that we attempted to reach them one way or the other. Um, to the last known address, so we have to have all that, all that documentation. So when I bring them to you, I have to make sure that we, that we have a fairly certain position that we have done all that. All that's necessary.
Those records are here at the town.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, we have to keep all the green cards, whether they're signed or returned unsigned. We have to have all the notices, they have to be dated, all that stuff, but it's, it's very labor intensive, especially when you get behind like this. Cuz it's gonna take hours and hours for each one of these things.
And our town personnel are doing that?
Well, we will go through it once we know, uh, the policy that you wanna go with, I don't wanna, uh, dig too far into it, if, if it's. For example, some of them have people living in them, and if you decide that you don't ever wanna deal with those, we're not gonna spend the time to, you know, to, to accumulate that record. For you to prove that it's, it's there, but if you do, then we'll just kinda move through them. Bring one or two at a time, so it's not overwhelming. That makes sense?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I want to know that if people are living in the properties that they didn't. Whether or not. You know, obviously, they've gotten, whether they signed the certified letter and it got it or not, but. Been made aware of the fact that there might be. Things that they can apply for to help, you know? Cuz I know one situation that they don't even get their mail, so, you know. It all gets taken back to the postal office, so they don't even get it, cuz they don't.
Get anybody's.
They don't get their mail ever, on anything, so. So, you know, that, that's the hard part, it's whether, and how, how do you proceed in that situation where you can't communicate with them? By mail and we're. You know, ninety-eight percent of the people that live in this town pay their taxes and the other two percent that don't, you know. There has to be some sort of give and take there, so, um. That's, that's how I think about that, but.
Joe, you still wanna table this? Yeah, to review it some more?
Yes.
I, I would, I would agree with the motion and then let's just take a look at it in two weeks, et cetera, next meeting.
Yeah, bring it back.
Finalize it at that point. And, uh, are you happy?
I'll make the changes that Joe suggested and I'll bring those back too.
Awesome. Are, are, are you pleased that we have a real estate attorney on the board?
Oh, absolutely, I, yeah, no. More than area.
Well, listen, uh, if you want, Justin, you could send it to me by word and I can.
You can play with it, yeah, sure, I'll do that.
Um, but.
You want me to send it to your, to your office address?
Yeah.
Okay.
As we. This can has been kicked so far down the road for so many years. I'd like to, I'd like to get moving on it as quickly as next two weeks, make a plan because. I mean.
The little project for Christmas Day.
Yeah, exactly, you know. We need to, we need to pull the trigger on this stuff, cuz it's crazy, the numbers that are out there.
Okay. So on to the, uh, warrant, fiscal year four.
Uh, AT Southern Maine Vehicle Repairs, three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks, uh, Transport for the Transfer Station, two thousand five hundred and sixty-four. Cameron Tire and Service, these are for police vehicle maintenance, one thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Dennis K Burke Diesel and Gasoline, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine. EcoMaine tipping fees, two thousand three hundred and ninety. Buildings Oil and Propane, two thousand four hundred and seventy-three. Fleet Truck and Refrigeration Services, Harbor Works, Vehicle Maintenance, two thousand nine hundred and forty-five. A and B Builders, Building Improvements, um, Fire Station, some of the renovations to Fire Station, Lost and Products. Hydraulic Couplings, also for the Fire Department, I believe, one thousand eighty-five. Main Equalization Consultants, The Assessing Contract, two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven. Main Resource Recovery, Tire Removal, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. Main Waste to Energy Tipping Fees, two thousand seven hundred and forty-six. Main PERS, five thousand six hundred and eighty-five. Nickerson and O'Day Academy Project Expenditure, seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five. Northeast Emergency Apparatus Vehicles and Maintenance of Fire Equipment, two thousand one hundred and ninety. All Designs Project, former Monmouth Academy Project, three thousand three hundred and sixty-two. Cork Auto Group, more, uh, Vehicle Repairs, one thousand three hundred and eighty-three. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five. State of Maine IF&amp;W, one thousand one hundred and thirty-five, and United Construction and Forestry, five thousand dollars. For a total of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two.
What was the K and B Builders for something with the Fire Station, I didn't hear the amount on that.
I, I don't know, cuz it's, 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 it's. It's what?
You combine them a lot of times.
Find what? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing it.
The only, yeah, the only invoice I had submitted were for windows at Compton Hall.
Oh, is that what it was then?
Yep.
Okay, that's my mistake, I put a note on here, I wrote fire, I don't know why, cuz I, I looked these up, so I'm, I'm half intelligent about what they are, but apparently I. Looked at something wrong, so I'm sorry.
Nope.
It must be for Justin Hall.
It's my invoice.
I make a motion, we approve warrant number twelve, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Paul Hill. By Ken, second by Kristen, to, uh, approve warrant number. Twelve for, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, all those in favor?
I will abstain. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?